Okay. All right. I'd like to call tonight's November 1st council meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm asking Councilmember Brocko to please lead us in the pledge.
Who's joining me in the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to uphold what it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. And then we have an invocation by Bill Hawkins. If you could please write.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the community, and staff. I spoke yesterday in church on elevating hope, and I think that's exactly what we need in our city today. Recent events, but we also need unity. This is where we become a community, not just a city, that we support all that takes place here in supporting families. Would you join with me in a word of prayer? Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. The word of God says it's new every morning, and I think it's there because we need that every morning. And, Lord, we call upon you today, Father, for peace, for hope, for unity, for healing. And we pray comfort for those that are brokenhearted, those that are experiencing loss and have lost loved ones, those that are recovering this evening. God, we pray for them, for healing as well. Yeah, we just, again, we pray a shroud of peace and unity would just surround our community and our city, God. Father, we thank you for your goodness again. Lord, I thank you for our first responders. And Lord, we pray that, as always, Lord, that you would watch over them, our fire, our PD, and those that serve us on a regular basis. God, we pray that you would watch over them as they watch over us, and we pray this in your name. Guide us, direct us this evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay. City Clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
This evening's agenda was posted on Wednesday, October 28th, at 1:00, 2021, at 1:28 PM.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Brocko.
Here.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Present.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
Mayor Blankley.
Here.
And noted for the record, Councilmember Armand Darris and Councilmember Hilton are absent.
Okay. Thank you. Orders of the day. Don't think we have anything. Boards and Commission interviews. This is the time for interviews for open seats on boards, commissions, and committees vacant as of September 2021 for future appointment on November 15th, 2021. Leanne, would you like to give that report, or should we just call up the...
Yeah, tonight we have openings to fill on the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee as well as the Open Government Commission. We do have applicants here to be interviewed, so if you can just call them up by name and you can interview them one by one.
Perfect. Okay, so there are... We're going to start with Housing and Revitalization Commission. There is one open seat with a term ending 12/31/22, and we have four applicants. We'll see if all four are here. If I call your name, can you please at least come up towards the front if you're sitting far away, and then we'll take you one at a time. So I'll start with Alicia Costa. Is Alicia here? Okay. Then Laura Onefeather. Okay. Maybe I'll just do it this way. If you could come on up. And then to let others know, Jan Guffrey will be after that, and then Mike Sanchez after that. Okay? Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. So we're just gonna... We'll try to make this as informal as possible. Thank you very much for applying. We need people to step up. And I'll just start with asking if you just would like to spend a minute or two. Just, we have all seen your application, so just telling us a little bit about what makes you interested in this commission and why you think you'd be the best applicant, and then I'll see if other council members have other questions. Okay?
My name is Laura Onefeather. I was born here in...
Can you maybe closer to the microphone, or pull the microphone towards you? If you can. Thanks.
My name is Laura Onefeather, and I was born here in Gilroy, California. I moved away when I was younger, and in the cities that I have lived in, from California to Las Vegas to South Dakota, I've done a lot of community outreach. I moved back to Gilroy last year to care for my mom and have since then kind of been trying to find a way to fit into my community again. And one of the things that I was really interested was revitalizing the community garden that's around Eagleberry. And then kind of just working towards finding out what the community itself wants and needs, and maybe I can help be a part of bringing that to life.
Great. Thank you. Welcome back. Right?
I'm happy to be back.
Thank you. All right, Council, I'll start at this end, because I always start at that end. Councilmember Leroy Munoz, do you have any particular question? No? Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Thank you. And thank you for applying. You had mentioned that you want to get the community involved. How would you go about doing so and sort of utilizing the information that you get?
I'm more of a kind of... I've been walking around downtown and going, kind of just driving around all of Gilroy. Gilroy has since grown tremendously since I left, so I've been just kind of reaching out to people that I know already, but then also just kind of trying to support the local businesses. And I would really... I probably would need a little help in knowing how to reach out to the community, maybe through council members or, you know, other people like that.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks or Councilmember Brocko? Anything? No? Thank you so much. November 15th, we'll do it. Thank you. Okay. Jan Guffrey? So it's just same question to you to start, one to two minutes on just why you're applying and what makes you think you're the best candidate.
Thank you. I just wanted to get involved in my community. We've only been here a couple of years. We lived in San Jose for many, many years. The homeless issue is a huge issue there, and it's an issue here, too, and just breaks my heart to see people out there on the street. I really want to thank Mr. Brocko, Ms. Marcus, and Mr. Tovar, I think it was, for that... the committee, the ad hoc committee on homelessness that made the... that studied the issue and made the recommendation. I know you're all, you know, concerned about that issue. So that's my really, you know, main thing that I want to get involved. I want to give back to my community. I went over the minutes of the last Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee and, Laura, and I found out how much you're getting from CDBG and what your goals are and what the Gilroy Compassion Center does, and all these alphabet soups of acronyms that are... that I learned about, area medium income, below market rate, and residential development, all those acronyms that were so easily tossed around by all of you. And I learned about them in the last few days. So I want to learn. I want to be part of the community, and I want to give back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Tovar, do you want to ask your same question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And Jan, thank you for applying. Asked the same question. I mean, as you know, it's very important for us to make sure the community is involved and they get as much input. How would you go about doing so and to utilize that information?
Right. Well, I know that lots of people, even if you put it on a website or put it somewhere electronically, lots of people just don't get that information for one reason or another. So I know there are entities that do that, that are good at reaching out to people, and I think that's really important, because I know you all, and I certainly would be interested to know what people really want to see, like in the Neighborhood Revitalization area and also in the rest of Gilroy, to see what people really want in terms of housing and neighborhood revitalization and that, too. So I would definitely think about a consultant to try to reach out. I mean, I recently, I was at a meeting where somebody said... It had to do with the development, and I forget, it's on 10th Street, I think. Anyway, so the people that were reaching out said, "Well, we emailed the owners of the apartment buildings that are right next to that development," but they didn't go to ask the people that are living, going to be living right next to the development what they thought of something. So that sort of thing, I think, doesn't help the community.
Thank you. Again, Councilmembers Brocko and Marks? Nothing? Okay. Thank you, Jan, very much. All right. Mike or Michael, however you wish us to be addressing you tonight. Hi. So starting with the same question. Yeah. Why... What made you want to apply for this, and why are you the best candidate for the position?
Well, arguably, that's not my decision to make. I appreciate my esteemed colleagues, I guess, who are also trying to apply for this. I'm just at a point in my life where, you know, I've been here all my life. My wife and I have been married 37 years, together since we were teenagers. We've lived through Gilroy, the good, the bad, the great, the other. And, you know, we do a lot in the community as far as just regular citizens, non-governmental, non-public service. And I think it's just time that we look at what else we can do to help. There's no doubt that our city, our community, has some tough days ahead, and I think a lot of that just comes down to individual and collective leadership and honest, open discussions, and really looking at data as it's presented and asking the hard questions in every decision that's made. On this committee, I think I could be a benefit because of 20 years of construction experience, some development, a little bit of real estate, and then just being in business for myself. I understand profit and loss. I understand, you know, projections and such. And I just think I could be a help. And if it so works out that I'm selected, then I'll do my best to just be a help and be a con voice and a reasonable decision-maker, hopefully. And that's really about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar? Do you want to...
Sure. Thank you.
I know, it's up to you. I just...
Yeah.
Giving the same opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you for applying. Just sort of same question. I know, like you mentioned, you're involved, but how would you make sure that the entire community, or diverse communities, is sort of heard when it comes to issues?
Well, I honestly think it comes down to mindset. You know, we're a growing community, but we're one community. As it stands right now, you're all elected in an open district, right? There's no district. Morgan Hill up the road, they're segregated into districts. Right now, we're one community, and so we need to go after everybody from every demographic and every walk of life and treat everybody as one, because basically, we're all Gilroy citizens and we all matter. And so, taking that approach, I would use my experience with social media, I would use our experience in just being out and about as ambassadors for different nonprofits, different organizations, and really just old-fashioned networking and communicating. You know, both my wife and I, probably my wife a little better than I... She'd actually be the better candidate than me right now, but we just have a natural ability to have conversations with people, and I think that is what it comes down to. We have to be approachable, and we have to be willing to go out of our comfort zone and introduce ourselves to people and get to know them. And by getting to know people and building those relationships, we'll be able to represent the entire city.
All right. Thanks. Councilmembers Marks or Brocko? Anything? Okay. Thank you. That's it for Housing and Revitalization. Thank you to the three who were here, and we are moving on to Open Government. Is Ken Christopher here? I don't see him. Okay. How about Tia Enriquez? Yeah. No? Okay. So neither one of those applicants is here. We have, for the public, we have one seat on that board that ends 12/31/24. All right? And that's it, then, because we have no applicants for the Physically Challenged Board. That has one seat open, expiring in December of 2023, so if anybody's out there who wants to apply for that, let us know. Okay?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make a suggestion, maybe to our city staff, for the candidates that aren't selected? Could we reach out to them and see if they're interested in the other sort of commissions that we have available, and that way, hopefully, we can fulfill all...
Of course. Something we can do, though, just at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we actually have the annual recruitment going on for the interviews that you'll conduct in January, so we will ask candidates if they wish to be carried forward to that process.
Perfect.
There'll be even more openings there. These are ones that come up because of people who are unable to fulfill the term that they originally signed up for. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that. We now move to employee introductions, and in the Police Department, we have Diana Casey and Raul Razoo, and I'll let you, Chief, take it from there.
Madam Mayor, good evening, members of council, members of the public. I'm happy to share with you our two newest additions to our supervisory staff. First off, we have Diana Casey, who's been promoted from the rank of officer to the rank of corporal, and her promotion is effective October 7th, 2021. She's born and raised in Hollister, and after graduating from San Bernardino High School, went to Gablin College and then San Jose. Particular admiration is that she do so while working full-time and raising her son Roman as a single parent. She attended the academy in 2003, and she was... Her father got the opportunity before he passed to pin her badge on her, so that was a very special moment for her. She has been with us since then, and while with us, she's been a member of the anti-crime team, a hostage negotiator, an investigator with the Major Accident Investigation Team, a field training officer, training our new recruits, and recently, a member of the Mounted Enforcement Unit, just completed her 40-hour certification course. And, you know, when folks prepare for a promotional exam, it's kind of a family affair, so she couldn't have accomplished that with the help of her husband, who is also a police officer in San Jose. She enjoys spending time with her husband, Joel, and her two children, Mia and Lily. She also spends quality time with her mother, two sisters, and brother. Again, congratulations to Corporal Casey and...
Yeah.
Thank you for having me here tonight, Chief Espinoza. I'm still very humbled by the appointment, and I will give you 110%, not only to you and the department, but to the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Raul Razoo, who's been promoted to the rank of sergeant from corporal. He's been serving the Police Department as a corporal since May of 2019. Raul is a 15-year veteran of law enforcement, began his career with the San Jose Police Department in 2006. While at the San Jose Police Department, he was a member of the Bicycle Patrol Team, a motor officer in the Traffic Enforcement Unit. We took him in 2013, and in the past eight years, in addition to patrol duties, he has worked as a motor officer in our traffic unit and is currently a major accident investigator, also a member of the Hostage Negotiation Team, the Bicycle Patrol Team, and also on the Mounted Enforcement Unit. Raul is married to his lovely wife, Ashley, and they both have two boys, Hayden, age 11, and Gavin, age 8. Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Razoo. Congratulations.
Mayor, city administrators, council members, thank you for having me up here. I want to say thank you to this whole city hall, Leanne McPhillips, everybody in the department who made this decision, and then most importantly, to my wife, Ashley, and my two boys, Hayden and Gavin. They've been by my side every step of the way, on the long nights, midnights, weekends, callbacks, you guys have always been there. I thank you and I love you. That's all for...
Thank you. And now we have two in Public Works. Daryl, do you want to introduce Susanna Ramirez? And Ikbal Wright? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm excited to introduce two of our newest staff members tonight. We'll start with Susanna Ramirez. She has a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering from San Jose University and has three years of experience working in the heavy civil engineering private sector, where she specialized in quality control and mixed design and asphalt concrete pavements. Most recently, she worked at the project management department of a private company, mostly working on underground utility infrastructure upgrades and emergency work. She was born and raised in Watsonville and currently lives in Salinas with her family. She enjoys traveling to new places and being out in nature. She serves on the school site council committee for her son's high school and likes to be an active member of her community. She's excited to be a part of the Public Works Engineering Department for the City of Gilroy. Susanna?
Hello. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the City of Gilroy, and I'm very excited to be here.
Thank you.
So welcome.
Secondly, tonight, we have Ikbal Singh, who recently joined us as an engineering technician in the Engineering Department. He's completed his bachelor's degree in civil engineering in 1989. He then went on to acquire his postgraduate diploma in environmental pollution thereafter. After moving to the U.S. in 1996, he completed study with a diploma in AutoCAD Design Drafting from San Jose and later was certified in GIS from Foothill College at Los Altos. He has worked as an engineering technician for the City of Daly City for 20 years. He has assisted project managers and senior engineers in all phases of CIP and development projects. He has also experienced in construction inspections, encroachment permits, and plan reviews since 2015. He currently lives in Sunnyvale with his family and has one son and one daughter. His wife works in the medical device sector as a quality assurance technologist. His son is doing freelancing in media, and his daughter is pursuing a degree in graphic design from San Jose State University. His hobbies are music, movies, and travel. He is interested in traveling around different parts of the world in the future. He's excited to work here at the City of Gilroy and pledges to do his best to serve the city, his department, and the residents of our fine city. Ikbal.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council and all the members. I'm very happy to work here, and I will try my best to put all the best effort to my work job.
Thank you. Thank you all, and congratulations to those promoted. All right. Moving on to item two, which is ceremonial items, and we have none. So item three is presentations to the council. This is the part of the agenda for anybody who would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. So I'm going to pause to ask that anybody who is wishing to speak during this time, that you have already completed a yellow card and handed it to Leanne, so that I am aware of how many people wish to speak during this time on whatever subject. I'm not asking for just on one subject, but on any subject, if you want to speak at this time. So are all cards in, then? And Leanne, how many do we have?
Mayor, you have six.
We have six. Okay. Then we'll do two minutes per person, so let's go ahead and start the... When she calls her name.
Okay. Our first public speaker is Mike Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Hanson. I'm one of the directors of the Gilroy Tennis Club. I'm speaking in appreciation of the partnership that we've shared with the City of Gilroy over the years, and to read an example of this partnership and an example of agreements between the City of Gilroy and the Gilroy Tennis Club. We have several members here in support. If you could stand, please. These are all members of the Gilroy Tennis Club. Now, I'll read a letter written by the past city recreation manager, Maria De León, to the United States Tennis Association, verifying... This is hard to do with a mask. Verifying the city's support of a USTA Facility Assistance Grant request submitted by the Gilroy Tennis Club. This grant request was approved by USTA, and the funds from the grant, and with the funds from the grant, the City of Gilroy and the GTC membership, the project was completed successfully in 2013. Now, I'll read the letter by Maria De León. Attention, U.S. Tennis Association Facilities. This letter is to confirm that the City of Gilroy Recreation Department has been a long-term partner of the Gilroy Tennis Club. Due to our partnership, they have been instrumental in supporting tennis-related activities and the improvements of outdated tennis courts at the Los Animas Veterans Park. The City of Gilroy is fortunate that the GTC is looking to continue this effective collaboration. As a result, the Parks Division and Recreation Department will continue facility maintenance and tennis program for a minimum of five years. That was a requirement of the grant. GTC has committed to work in partnership with the City of Gilroy. As a result, the Recreation Department will continue allowing USTA to host matches at Los Animas Veterans Park, as this has been done so successfully in the past. And then it just goes on with her address.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. That was under two... A minute 50? Thank you. Do we have the timer, though, so that the public can see? All right. Next speaker, please. Thank you very much, and thank you all for doing it this way, standing, so we can see who stands behind those comments. Okay? Go ahead, next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Edward Taylor. I'm a resident of the city, and I'm a member of the Gilroy Tennis Club, and I also serve on the board of the club. The reason, I should also point out, as Mike did, that we have board members here on the front row and several interested club members. The reason we're here today is to address the letters and comments presented to you recently by a few of the pickleball players, demanding that tennis courts 5 and 6 at Los Animas Park be reserved for pickleball play. To put this issue in context, pickleball was previously played at Wheeler Auditorium. Since COVID-related closings of Wheeler Auditorium, Parks and Recreation gave permission for pickleball to play on tennis courts 5 and 6 until Wheeler Courts could be reopened. Having pickleball players play at Los Animas seemed to be a good temporary solution until it was clear the alterations made to the court were damaging the court's surface. This damage made the courts unplayable for tennis, and it also presented a hazard for pickleball players. It's been the policy in practice of Parsons Rec to prohibit the use of it in Los Animas tennis courts for any activities that could damage or result in damage. This policy has been used to remove skateboarders, roller hockey, soccer players, and others from using and subsequently damaging the courts. The reason for this policy is simple and clear. The recovery from such damages, meaning resurfacing the courts, is expensive and time-consuming. As an example, presently, courts 5 and 6 are currently being resurfaced to correct the damage that the pickleball players made to those courts. I also should note that GTC is managing this project and is prepaying the contractor to have that work done, so that we can expedite the completion of that work.
Thank you. Yes. Are you done?
I have one more paragraph.
Oh. That's okay. You've got 10 seconds. Yeah.
For the context of GTC's interest in this matter, for more than 40 years, the Gilroy Tennis Club has promoted and supported tennis in the City of Gilroy. Over those decades, we have grown tennis as a family-oriented activity, as well as providing a competitive sporting environment for those so inclined. Toward that effort, the government has... The club has raised and invested monetarily more than $200,000 and placed that money into improvements at the tennis courts.
Thank you.
Plus numerous amounts of in-kind contributions for improving the courts. GTC has voluntarily taken on a custodial role for those courts, inspecting and making sure that they're not damaged and used inappropriately.
I'm sorry. I know. I have to stop you. Maybe you get another person to speak. GTC is Gilroy Tennis Club. I take it.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's been beneficial for the...
Thank you. You can have someone else can take some time, but right now, the time is up. I have to be the same for everybody. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Kathy Cavasson. I'm a board member of the Gilroy Tennis Club. Gilroy Tennis Club has resurfaced courts at Los Animas, South Valley Junior High, Gilroy High School, and Gablin College. We continually resurface Los Animas courts yearly between three and five, every three and five years. We replace wind screens and tennis nets, net straps, as the... as need requires. We have purchased bleachers at Christopher High and bought court maintenance equipment for the tennis teams at both high schools. Tennis club members coach tennis at both Gilroy and Christopher High Schools. Tennis club members spend time educating and training others in the use of and care of the courts and the equipment. The club has also gifted to and led the effort to secure for the City of Gilroy the following capital improvements and resources for Los Animas Veterans Park. Along with club members, the building of Court 6 benches at all the courts, a granite picnic table outside Court 1. We worked to secure grant funding, $10,000 from the USTA, and contributed $33,000 from our 500 membership for the $71,000 overlay project for Courts 1 to 4. A junior's tennis program at Gilroy, in which Gilroy Tennis Club provided uniforms and equipment. Youth tournaments held at Los Animas draws visitors from Gilroy and from all of Northern California. Also, USTA NorCal Tennis League Tennis, which is a year-round activity, brings visitors and players from as far away as Carmel Valley and Salinas. Gilroy Tennis Club is a USTA sanctioned organization and the Los Animas Tennis Center is a USTA-approved facility. Gilroy Tennis Club sponsors as many as twelve-plus USTA NorCal tennis leagues over the course of a year. The official rules of tennis prohibit sanctioned play on tennis courts with permanent lines unrelated to tennis, except for like the thirty-six foot or the sixty-foot blended lines. Those are acceptable. A sanctioned league or tournament match cannot be played on courts with permanent basketball, volleyball, four-square, or badminton lines.
Okay, you're, we're at time. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm the last one to speak.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, you're going on your time.
Discord between the pickleball community and the tennis community is not something just specific to Gilroy. It's a problem experienced in other tennis communities. Many pickleball players migrated from tennis to pickleball and they thought, well, this would work fine for them, but they started adding these pickleball lines to our tennis courts and that really messed up the tennis courts. This had been a prob, this is a problematic problem for the USTA, which is United States Tennis Association and in tennis play in general. So what do we do? Pickleball is an up-and-coming sport. They need a place to play. So, but not at the expense of the tennis community. Our USTA tennis matches and our general tennis play suffer when those other lines are on the tennis court. Tennis has been an asset to our Gilroy Parks and Rec. Lots of people play. Perhaps one idea would be to combine our efforts in creating a specific place for the pickleball players to play. San Juan Batista had created that for their pickleball community. So the Gilroy Tennis Club is more than willing to help in this regard and we stand by ready to assist and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next speaker?
Ernesto Oliveras.
Hi, I'm Ray Blackoff and.
I don't think so. Okay.
Not Ernesto, Ray. Ernesto will follow Ray.
Okay.
Okay, Ray Blackoff, my wife is Lisa Blackoff, Rotary President currently for Morning Sunrise. Chamber Volunteer of the Year in two thousand and twenty and myself, past president of the Gilroy Tennis Club, Vice President, and I was a tennis pro for ten years in my younger days. I'm currently coach for the Gilroy High School Boys and Girls Tennis Teams. I have never seen such horrendous issues since pickleball came on board to Los Animas Park. I have been here for decades, participating in improving the courts. The amount of money that we've put into those courts is astronomical and yet pickleball refuses to contribute a dime, at least at this moment. They want to take over those courts and they want to take away the ability for us to have tournaments and when you start, as we've mentioned, piling on all these extra lines on the courts, literally trying to play tennis with multiple lines is virtually impossible and particularly as a good tennis player, this really affects your game. The damage that they did is totally terrible to our club and to what they did without even asking permission, the damage that we put in hours to clean up, to repair. They damaged a couple other courts with putting down tape and not even asking. That left, as we all know what tape leaves, sticky goo that doesn't come up. And now we're resurfacing a couple of courts because of the damage on the back two courts. And those are our newest courts. So El Roble is, if they're really into pickleball, then they should start raising their own funds like we do with the USTA and donations. I have my name on benches at the park, on a bench, and I take pride in being part of this community and our tennis club. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker? That looks like Ernie.
Madam Mayor, City Administrator, City Council, public. My name is Ernie Olivares. I've been in Gilroy over seventy years. In nineteen seventy-nine, after coming back from school in Southern California, I, it was my first time I started using the Los Animas tennis courts. And over the years, I've admired, I've been very proud of the relationship between the Gilroy Tennis Club and the City of Gilroy. The commitment that I saw from the officers of the Gilroy Tennis Club over the years is incredible in terms of the support, not just with their time. There are several repairs that have been made that haven't even been mentioned, but also their investment, their dollar investment, really respecting the partnership that they've had. And we're not anti-pickleballers. I have several friends that play pickleball and I wish that they could continue and have an avenue to enjoy that sport. In fact, I know, I'm aware that Sunrise Park was going to be a great opportunity for them. I understand the concern of there being no bathrooms there. Ray just mentioned El Roble Park. I think that's another great opportunity, but there are also, I don't believe there's any bathrooms there either. Now, I've played at Sunrise and there's many days where you come to Los Animas and all of the courts are being occupied, all six of them, so you have to go look for another court. So we've had to play at Sunrise and enjoyed it. Somehow, there should be a solution that is really a win-win for pickleballs and the City of Gilroy. But for all the reasons that have already been mentioned, not the Gilroy Tennis Club courts. We've had, we have a huge investment there. We want to protect that and we want to make sure that our USTA competition and league play and of course, all of the non-GTC community that want to use those courts, that there's as much availability for tennis as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you all. That concludes public comment. And now I will take us to the council member reports. Councilmember Bracco.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Marks. Councilmember Tovar.
No report tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Just one very brief report, Madam Mayor. Last week, on October twenty-seventh, the Valley Water Commission met. Both Councilmember Tovar and I were able to participate in that. They got a, they gave us an update on the drought situation and it was ironic that we got the big drought report just as it was starting to rain in our region of the world. But nonetheless, even amidst the rain, the underlying message from the Valley Water District is that it really is, there's never enough rain in California that we can afford to waste water. So with that, the district has continued to do its drought conservation outreach that includes multilingual digital print TV, social media, business editorials, videos, yard signs, all kinds of different things. The basic takeaway from all of this is, please do continue to practice good discipline with water use, even amidst all of the rain we've been having. That's it.
Thank you, and I have no report. All right. So moving on to the consent calendar. Is everybody good with the items on the consent calendar?
Second.
Are there any future council-initiated items? Thank you. All right, consent calendar? You made a motion?
A second.
Okay, I guess it's not, not on our board, so, okay. So Councilmember Bracco made a motion to approve the consent calendar and it was seconded by Councilmember Tovar. So roll call vote? Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley? Yes, that passed unanimously with the five, unanimously with the five that are here, yeah, five vote. All right, great. Bids and proposals, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of new business, we have some. All right, item A, annual re-adoption of the city's investment policy and approval of Section one fifteen Investment Guidelines and Contribution. Harjot, our Finance Director, will be giving this report.
That's correct. All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members, teammates, and the public present tonight. Harjot Sangha, City's Finance Director, I'll be presenting the item before you tonight, which is the re-adoption of the city's investment policy as well as Section one fifteen Investment Guidelines and a related contribution. Some background on this topic. As it relates to the investment policy, we, the annual review and re-adoption of the investment policy is required by the policy in itself as well as the California Government Code five-three-six-four-six. So as a result, enclosed to the staff reports staff are presenting with some minor edits and updated investment policy. In regards to the Section one fifteen trust, in November of two thousand and nineteen, the City Council held, basically authorized the establishment and the initial funding of the Section one fifteen trust for pension. In February of twenty, council held a study session which included the review of the PAR's investment strategies during which the council endorsed the moderate strategy as the investment of choice and also provided directive on funding the trust. Subsequent to the February two thousand and twenty study session, the COVID pandemic hit, shifting the focus, basically prioritizing the response to the pandemic and addressing the negative economic impacts. So this item is really, staff is returning to formalize that direction that was received in February to put that in action. As it relates to the investment policy, there are really two updates in the policy. Those areas are applicability. This section was updated to reflect that this policy, which is the city's general investment policy, does not apply to the Section one fifteen trust as the investments for such trusts are directed by separate guidelines and objectives as allowed by California Government Code five-three-two-one-six. The second area that was updated in the policy was the responsibilities for Investment Committee. This is purely a cleanup item to reflect the current position titles in that section. In regards to the Section one fifteen trust, the council again previously endorsed the moderate strategy as the investment. Subsequent to that, staff went back and met with Highmark, which is the investment manager, to review and just confirm that indeed, you know, fast forward now, moderate strategy still is well-aligned with the city's goals and objectives. So as a result, we confirmed, yes, it does, and we also prepared a enclosed investment guidelines that basically align with the moderate strategy and kind of memorializes the key account information that we have with the trust. It also outlines the investment objectives, any kind of constraints around the investments that they can do. It also outlines the duties and responsibilities for the plan sponsor, the trustee, and the investment manager. Also, in February two thousand and twenty, as I indicated earlier, council did provide directive on funding the trust. One of the options was by prepaying the annual unfunded accrued liability payment in the beginning of the fiscal year and utilize those interest savings as contributions to the trust. The second was annually reviewing up to twenty-five percent of the fiscal year-end budgetary savings as contribution to the trust. Again, as we're all aware, due to the negative impacts of COVID, you know, neither of those who could be recommended or implemented as we had to dip into our reserves. Fast forward this year, as the economy and the city's fiscal health are showing signs of recovery, which is evident by the separate staff report that you'll get subsequent to this one, staff are cautiously, you know, optimistic and are recommending implementing one of the two at this time, which is basically authorizing a two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-dollar contribution, which is a savings realized from the unfunded prepayment for fiscal year twenty-two. There are no budgetary amendments required because this is a saving that we're going to realize and pass on to the trust. And this, this slide is really just to demonstrate and illustrate what the PAR's client distribution allocation is. As you can tell, majority are structured within the mid-range, the balance, moderate and moderate conservative, and the highest allocation, as you can see, thirty-seven percent, is in the moderate strategy. And with that, that concludes my presentation on this topic. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Council, any questions of Harjot before I go to public comment? None? All right, public comment. Do we have anybody wishing to speak on this item?
I have no speaker cards at this time.
Okay, then coming back, close the public comment section. So this is where we have three possible actions. So if anybody is wishing to make a motion, I would like to clarify, or I'd like you to clarify that it include all three of the, of the items unless there is further discussion?
No, Madam Mayor, there's no further discussion from me at least. So I would make the motion for the three elements of the recommendation, adopting the city's updated investment policy. The second part is approving the city's investment guidelines. I'll just read the whole thing. For the post-employee benefits trust for pension established with PARs. And finally, to authorize the two-hundred-and-forty-two K realized savings for prepayment option fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two.
To be contributed to the Section one fifteen trust.
To Section one fifteen trust, the unfunded.
Right, that's the important part, right. And seconded by Councilmember Tovar? Okay, so everybody understand that? We're putting another two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars into the one fifteen trust, which gives us some leeway to help, help pay down our PERS debt when we decide to actually remove it from the trust and to the PERS, right, to the PERS debt. Okay, so with that, we'll take roll call.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, and that's also unanimous five, zero. Okay, item B, receive preliminary fiscal year twenty-one year-end financial report, and that still falls under finance?
Absolutely. Harjot Sangha, the Finance Director, I'll be presenting the next item as well, the fiscal year twenty-one preliminary year-end financial report. Some background, the fiscal year twenty-one budget was adopted on June three, two thousand and nineteen as part of the fiscal year twenty and twenty-one biannual budget process. In two thousand and twenty, the COVID-nineteen pandemic hit and then had a negative impact, obviously, on the city's finances, requiring a general fund financial recovery plan to be implemented. And over the, over the year, and in June of two thousand and twenty this year, council adopted the fiscal year twenty-two, I should say twenty-three biannual budget, which was adopted and also received the last general fund forecast at that time. The general fund is going to be the primary focus of this report as it's a primary funding source and for essential city services as well as the one fund that council has the most discretion over. And all of the non-general fund information is presented in aggregate in latter part of the report. So jumping right in, into the general fund, overall, high level, looking at the general fund for fiscal year twenty-one, the fund received sixty-point-nine million in revenues, which is approximately four million better than the amended budget, and this was notably due to the first half payment of the ARPA funds, which was about five-point-five million dollars. If we were to exclude the ARPA contribution, the general fund revenues actually came in three percent under, which was about one-point-five million under budget, and that was primarily in the areas of sales tax and TOT. Speaking relatively specific to the revenue categories, so sales tax in fiscal year twenty-one, so you received eighteen-point-three million dollars. Although you'll see it's less than the amended budget amount, the revenue at year-end came in higher than what we projected in June. And this was approximately about two-point-one million dollars, primarily due to very strong economic recovery in quarter two of the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. And this was notably in the general retail category as well as the transportation sector and last but not least, the county pool. This was also the period when vaccines were readily available, they were being rolled out, and the shelter-in-place orders were being relaxed, allowing folks to be out in the, you know, out in the community and spending some dollars. Also during this period was the time when the ARPA Act was passed, which provided direct stimulus dollars to, to individuals across the nation as well as extended some unfunded or unemployment benefits as well as, you know, funding to the cities that we received. It's also for the sales tax category, important to note that, you know, sales tax is probably one of the categories that's most prone to impact in any kind of movement in the economy. So this was a hard target, not just for staff, but also, you know, consultants out there that are forecasting. Initially, the forecast assumed we were going to recover within a year and then later it was two years. But now that we are seeing the quarter-two numbers for two thousand and twenty-one, now we're believing that it might even be about a year and a half since we get fully recovered in this category. Now, looking at the property tax revenue category, the property tax city received was seventeen-point-seven million, which is approximately.
which is approximately 2.3 million better than budget. And majority of the increases due to the ERAF payment, which is basically a portion of the property tax goes to fund education. After that threshold is met, the remaining property tax then gets allocated back to all the taxing entities. The city received about $1.6 million in additional property tax through that ERAF payment. The category of UUT, the utility user tax, city received 4.4 million, about $200,000 less than budget. The UUT tax base, we're seeing continued deterioration in the tax base as there's been changes in telephone, in telephone and media delivery services over the years. For TOT, one of the hardest hit, the city received $1.1 million, approximately $900,000 less than budget. And this was primarily due to the shelter-in-place orders that were extended for majority of the fiscal year. For the business license category, the city received about $900,000 and actually came in slightly better than budget than we had anticipated, primarily due to as the shelter-in-place orders were relaxed, folks were starting to renew their business licenses and the contract, if you will, category of the business license continued to see, see increases. In the other revenue category, this category consists primarily of departmental charges for services, general fund overhead, fines and forfeitures, and also the intergovernmental revenues. The big component for fiscal year 21 is the $5.5 million in the ARPA funds that we received. Excluding that, there was about $6.3 million in development-related revenues for public works and community development. So that concludes the presentation on the revenue side, moving on to the expense for fiscal year 21, general fund expenditures.
Harjot, could we just pause here and do questions on just the revenue side? Is that all right? At least from here and then we'll go to public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the revenue side, okay, so Councilmember Leroy Munoz and then Councilmember Bracco and I have some of my own too.
Sure.
Go ahead, Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Actually, it's really not a question, just more of a comment generally with regard to the projections. You know, I know that as a city, we take a pretty conservative financial posture to things and I think that also extends to projections as well. And, you know, especially given the difficulty of trying to project through what we all have been living through for the last, you know, almost two years now, it's encouraging to see how close, if not exceeding, a lot of the projections we were. I mean, with the exception of the TOT, but that's a much smaller base, so there's going to be more variability there. But I just wanted to thank you for that because again, that's, that's always been our larger posture of being more conservative financially. And I think that's important such when we make these kind of projections during a difficult time. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracco?
Do we have any idea how many businesses are no more in Gilroy?
I don't have that information. Are you relatively speaking to folks that have either shuttered?
Yeah.
I don't have that information available.
We as a city don't have any of that information?
We can probably look into our business license program to see how many in-city business licenses did not end up renewing. But would we know to, with a confirmation that they indeed they didn't renew because they shuttered or that'll be the hard determination, but we can get some indication.
Mayor, if I can add to that same question. Not only businesses that have shut down, but also those that have sort of started up since this, because again, I think what Councilmember Bracco was asking is a really good question. You know, again, the projections, and I agree with what my colleague mentioned, that it's good to see those projections, but it'd be also good to know where we're at in regards to if businesses are starting to come in or if we're losing more business than we're gaining.
Sure, yeah, we can certainly report back out to you once we get to review the business license.
Thank you.
Okay, now my turn. I, I thought that the increase in business license was because Bracco's towing is finally having to pay as much as Marie Blankley CPA, because I don't know why, it's always been so much less. I'm just going to get to the bottom of that at some point. All right, when it comes to property tax, I want to confirm that that, that they, the increase over the projection has nothing to do with property values, right? Or did it?
It did.
It did?
Yeah, just to a certain extent, yeah. But the primary component was the ERAF, which I indicated the 1.6.
Right.
But there is, other as properties start transacting over the year, so as you know, we get a supplemental.
Yes.
There's also a documented transfer tax as, as things are happening. So those are some categories that also saw that for.
Okay, so some of it's from, from an increase, I mean, I understand what I'm saying is the reason we had that, we're getting more that are cut, let's just say, that our cut is a little higher than it was before is because of more transactions, higher values or both?
I think you wouldn't see the, if you're asking in, in relation to the current real estate environment and what the assessed values are currently, I don't think you would see that in fiscal year 21, more likely to reflect that in fiscal year 22 because there's a lag. But for fiscal year 21, the big driver really was the number of transactions that were changing hands as well as that ERAF came in.
Okay, that's, yeah, could you please, yeah, because I am, I'm trying to get at what, what triggers these more, more to us, yeah.
Mayor, if you look at the 15.4, I'm sorry, 15.4 million, that was a reduction that was expected by the county due to folks putting in for reassessing of their properties because many thought property values were going to go down during the recession.
I was one of them, exactly.
That didn't happen. So that's really where the majority of the growth is. It's kind of a false growth. It's just what didn't happen is why the number is higher than what we projected. So the 600,000 that you actually do see in growth is kind of small, but it is to some of those transactions because the role is done in the rears. So any major property growth, tax growth won't show up for another year or two.
I see, and our budget is based on the county. That's our starting point. I get it, that's, yeah, that's what I was losing. Okay, yeah, so business licenses, I'm getting to the bottom of that at some point. Okay, any other questions on revenue? Okay, thank you, Harjot, we'll go on to expenses.
So for general fund expenditures, they were, came in at 50.4 million, were approximately $2.7 million under budget. This was primarily due to salary savings as a result of vacancies that we had, also followed by some savings in the supplies and services category. And this will again, you know, shared across many, many departments and that typically held, held true. Any questions on the expenditures?
Questions, anyone? Got one?
On the police, went from 24 to, down to 22, are we that shorthanded? How many officers are we down?
I, I'm not sure, I don't have that information handy, maybe Leanne? About five?
Five.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So that's the savings, right?
It would be primarily in that area plus probably some in just supplies and services as well.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, then, public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Do you need to fill out a speaker card? Yes, please. Go ahead and come up and then bring me the card.
Harjot, is your presentation concluded?
No, I was just going to say you want me to run through this presentation?
Well, no, so take, let, have him fill out the card so that you, you need to fill that out and hand it in and we'll finish the presentation and then we'll public comment. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. Okay. Okay, yes, please continue.
Awesome.
My apologies.
So the next slide is essentially the general fund forecast. That's been updated with the preliminary actuals for revenues and expenses. And you can see, you know, notably the significant difference between fiscal year 20 where the actuals are, where the fund balance was 24% compared to now in fiscal year 21 at 37. And this is again, a combination of the financial recovery plan that the Council instituted, you know, and also the accelerated economic recovery, notably to the sales tax as well as getting some, you know, additional funds. Overall, the general fund fund balance for fiscal year 21 ended approximately $3.7 million better than we had projected in June of 2021. Again, you know, relatively to the sales tax, this wasn't unique to Gilroy. This held true across this, across the state as a result, a lot of the forecasts around sales tax is going to get revised. Specific for Gilroy, full economic recovery was expected by the end of fiscal year 23, but again, strong indications that the recovery will be sooner. As you can see, the reserves excluding the ARPA now exceed that 30% minimum required level. And also the, the forecast, if you'll see in the out-years, especially starting in fiscal year 24 onwards, does have a minor structural imbalance in the out-years. But we anticipate we can address this manageable variance through regular budget process when we come down to those, you know, fiscal years. Again, this is a different illustration and a graph of the general fund forecast. Notably, just to point out again, fiscal 20, we were under the targets, whereas now we are meeting and exceeding with, with the assistance of the ARPA funds. Right, this is the non-general, general fund revenue category. I won't spend too much time, just high level points. For fiscal year 21, we received about 66.9 million in non-general fund revenues, which is about 2.4 million under budget. The notable areas is the increase in the special revenues category was increased funding that we received from the Measure B funds. Going down to the recreation line item, historically, this fund is supported about 75, 70% by the general fund, rest by user fees. And as you're aware, as part of the general fund financial recovery plan, the support and the related service levels were reduced to $1.5 million annually. And you'll see on the next slide, for fiscal year 21, recreation generated approximately 200,000 in user fees and the general fund contributed about 1.5 as was planned. In the capital funds category, again, 10.2 million or about 4.4 million dollars less than budget, primarily a result of development projects that haven't pulled permits or finalized plans yet. There's no indication that they don't plan to do so. It was likely a timing issue. We may see these revenues come in in subsequent fiscal year. And for the enterprise funds, we had sewer generated 13.8 million or about half a million dollars less than budget and water generated 14.9 million, about a million dollars better than the budget, primarily in the user fees. As far as the non-general fund expenditures, high level fiscal year 21, there were $65 million, which is approximately $18 million less than budget, primarily in the areas of special revenues and/or capital funds. As you know, the Council adopted the capital improvement program in November of 2020 as due to the complex nature of the projects, the lead time to develop, design and budget, and subsequently awarding those capital projects, it can take many months. So we anticipate these appropriations to roll over into the next fiscal year and then projects being commenced. In the sewer area, we had 13.9 million dollars in actuals. The underspending was primarily again, the capital outlay and some materials and services. In the water funds, we had 15.6 million dollars in expenditures and the underspending was primarily in contractual payments to Valley Water for extraction of water fees. Getting closer to the end here, there are two items for Council consideration for amendments. First is the Quality of Life Officer, which is a two-year pilot program. This item is included on tonight's agenda later on today and the related report as well as the budget amendment is, is included as an action item there. The program would cost approximately 891,000 over two years as a pilot. The second item is a temporary fire station. This is not on tonight's agenda, but report in the budget amendment, we'll return to you at a future item. Essentially, what this does is provide seed money to get the temporary station up and running, which would be subsequently reimbursed through payments as part of the Glanloma Development Agreement that we're working on. All right, we did cover a lot of ground, some key takeaways from tonight. For you, or again, fiscal year 21 ended better than projected in June of 2021 for both revenues and expenses. There are strong indications, the economic recovery will be sooner than we previously expected. And last but not least, if this recovery does continue as it currently is, staff are evaluating and we will return back to you early spring 2022 with recommendations to resource services that were reduced during the pandemic induced recession. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Okay, so back to Council first now before, because I just thought the report was done, I'm sorry. Yes, so Council, I have questions too. So Councilmember Bracco, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that it was a really good report. It was really easy to understand and really simple to know where the money's coming from and go into. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to concur those comments because again, I think when sort of the ad hoc committee got together, you know, those are questions that we had and, and like my colleague just mentioned, you laid it out really well, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And I just wanted to comment that it's, you know, it's wonderful that things are going better than we, than we feared they would, but to remind everybody that it's because of the 5.5 million that we got in aid that has us in the position that, that we are in going forward. So, you know, God willing, the rest of the revenues keep, keep going and expenses can stay in line and we'll be okay. All right, so now I'm going to go to public comment. Do we have any public speakers?
We have some cards coming up.
Okay.
Please bring your cards.
Oh, so thank you, Harjot. We're going to go to public comment now. Okay?
Mr. Moharty?
Okay, you come to the, you, yeah, you stay there and you have three minutes, okay? So keep it to three minutes?
I'll make it short. So my name is Tanmam Moondi. So this is the first time I came here, actually primarily came for tennis, but anyway, I was listening all those stuff. So first question to you is, so as I think Mayor said, you have to increase the revenue unless the expense are maybe same rate. So what is that we are doing to make our revenue more, like mainly for businesses?
Okay.
I don't know where it is, but I want to see. And second question for the, your expense side, I do not see the difference between OpEx and CapEx. So you have all different kind of things. What is the CapEx and what are the OpEx, right? So that's the major thing I want to see, maybe next time. And then just want to say like from business side, right? So I do not see, I'm here my last eight years, I was in Sunny Fel, I bought a house here, I came back here my last nine years. But for last ten years, I do not see any kind of major infrastructural change or major, or major like hotels or major restaurant, anything in the last eight years. So when I came here, I thought, okay, tennis, a lot of things will change, but I didn't see, I'm like, I also, I see changes, but not a major changes in Gilroy City. So this is just a comment, so maybe you guys will do the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards?
No other speaker cards. Okay, that closes public comment. And that means we are, possible action. Well, this is a received preliminary, yeah, received report, year-end report, so there's really, there isn't any action. Are there any comments before I go on to the next item? Nope, okay.
Well, Mayor, I know there's no action, I mean, I'll wait, go ahead, I'll wait.
Okay, all right, so moving on to item C. Okay, hopefully we noted the commenter's comments and then get back to that later. Okay, authorization to hire and implement the Quality of Life Peace Officers Program. Staff report will be Bryce Atkins, Senior Management Analyst.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. So tonight's presentation is a fault to one of the items of the unhoused ad hoc committee and approved by Council. This is recommendation number 12 from the identified work plan. It's a little bit of background, the Quality of Life Officers concept actually started back in 2018. There's a two officer per shift pilot program. It's five overtime shifts per week and it ran from 2018 to 2019.
Can you hear?
It was authorized for two full.
Bryce, can you remove your mask? Sorry, it's just, yeah.
Too much?
Can't hear it, it's just not clear. Okay, thanks.
So the, as I was mentioning, it's a, the Quality Life Program started back in 2018 as a pilot program that was a basic overtime shift only. Started in 2018, ran through 2019. There was an authorization in 2019 for a pilot program for two years for two full-time officers for fiscal year 20 and 21. However, due to difficult recruitments in the first year and then the start of the pandemic in the second year, those positions could not be filled and so the program's put on hold. And again, that's, that's one of the recommendations from the ad hoc committee and approved by Council. So the program again, as being presented for Council approval tonight, is a two-year program. It'd be securing two full-time experienced officers to operate as this team approach and accomplishing a couple of different ends. One is connecting unhoused with resources for assistance and others addressing related criminal acts associated with either, you know, against the unhoused or on, you know, from the unhoused as well. And then assessing the conditions of the unhoused that they encounter as well. Give information for us as we consider strategies going forward. information for us as we consider strategies going forward. To give a little bit of background information on the proactive contacts that were made in 2018 and 2019, the two-officer teams averaged each year of 1.78 proactive contacts per hour for the hours they served. When we look at the, what's called the productive rate for police officers, this is, a full-time position is 2,080 hours generally. And when you back out, vacation, sick leave, and for a police officer particularly, the extensive training requirements that they have, the average hours of production are 1,750 roughly. Using that same proactive contacts per hour of 1.78, we're looking at potential contacts of 3,130 contacts. And this is not necessarily exclusive, and each one is a unique one, it's just total contacts they make. But given that in the 2019 census of the unhoused for City of Gilroy, we're looking at 704 people experiencing homelessness in Gilroy at that time, so.
Bryce, could I ask a quick question with regard to the proactive contacts? So that's, those are contacts where the officers are kind of out on their own, they see something, they investigate, they interact with somebody, is that correct?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, yeah, that's correct. Proactive is stuff that they've come across and they initiate on their own.
Got it, okay. And Bryce, maybe I'm cutting you off early here, but are there, are there numbers with regard to reactive contacts? That is, somebody calls the officer and says, hey, we got a situation here, could you come check it out?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
Those typically come from complaints from the business community, from residents, private residents, and they will have a list of complaints that they will tackle when they come in service, and that's kind of what they did when we-
Oh, okay, I think, I think I understand you now. So they, they get a call generally, hey, we've been having a problem, they go take a look, and that's being captured in the proactive contacts. Got it, that's, that's what I just wanted to make sure of. Thank you.
So description of the, the team operations, they're essentially partnering with community, faith-based, and government organizations, and aiming to cultivate new partnerships with them to essentially apply, you know, forward thinking on approaches to addressing issues surrounding unhoused. They're also attending and coordinating resource meetings with community stakeholders, and also looking at problem-oriented hotspot policing. They intend also to be responsive to reported concerns, gathering data to identify potential concerns, and then respond appropriately. The team composition is proposed to be drawn from experienced officers. They will be going through a specialty selection process, just like with any of the other specialty assignments that we have. If the program continues beyond the two-year pilot program, then the assignments would be then on a rotational basis every four years. Staffing these positions is a priority for the police department as new personnel are hired. We do recognize that nationwide, there is a challenge recruiting for law enforcement positions, and the local recruitment efforts are continuous with the city. And it's expected that the newly hired officers within backfill the void left by selected officers for this program.
Mayor, can I ask, Mayor can I ask a question?
Sure.
Bryce, thank you. Sort of going back, if you mind going back one slide, when we, obviously, if it's approved, we're looking at the Quality of Life Team, and we're talking about partnerships, attending meetings, and connecting them with different resources and organizations. Is there going to be, obviously, our PD is well-trained, but is there going to be a special training for these individuals to make sure that they're sort of connected with what resources are available, partnerships, who the go-to person is in these different organizations?
I'll defer to the chief.
Of course.
So from the law enforcement side, most of these officers have completed, well, our current experienced officers have completed crisis intervention training, de-escalation training. But once we start to assemble the group of stakeholders, then we'll try to determine what resources we can offer for those we come across. And conversely, these officers will develop that relationship with our supervising South County District Attorney's Office, and, and deal with those that are chronically committing crimes, and take that approach as well. And so those resources are going to come as we start to build those partnerships.
No, and that's perfect, and that's sort of what we sort of anticipated and expected and envisioned, because again, it's not just sort of, you know, some people say, well, they're just trying to be tough on homeless, but no, we're actually working to make sure we get them the resources, and we as a city are educated on sort of, you know, how to approach that, so, thank you.
The philosophy's a collaborative one, and so the ultimate goal is to try to make sure that we find permanent solutions, whether it be through the, through resources or the criminal justice route as well, but preferably helping those that we encounter.
Before, before you leave, Chief, I'm going to piggyback on that too, and just say that the, the idea here too, I'm hoping, will include, it's including help for residences and businesses too, who are having repeated issues, and it would be good to have a point source that can look into what exactly is going on in this particular, with this particular residential area, or this particular business, or particular residence that is, you know, whether it's near the Armory, or wherever it is that I know I keep getting calls, so that people feel like there's, you know, there's, that somebody knows and is, and is working at why, why the repeat keeps happening.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So next is discussion of the funding plan. Again, as mentioned in the last presentation on the budget performance for '21, we're looking to utilize savings from fiscal year '21 to fund both years of the pilot program, both '20, '22, and '23. Overall, it's 891,000 for the two years, but we expect the partial first-year expenditures as positions will need to be selected and fulfilled. But we also realize there may be unforeseen implementation costs that, that may pop up, so we're asking for the full year's appropriations to be, that are recommended for approval, and need to prevent any kind of administrative challenge as far as getting any supplies or materials that they might need. So the pilot program performance will be presented to council as it proceeds along, and will likely be an item of discussion in the next biannual budget, based on the performance, to see if council's interested in converting that to a full ongoing program. So tonight's recommendation is to authorize the hiring and implementation of the Quality of Life Officers Pilot Program, and adopt a resolution amending the '22 and '23 budget by 445,400 each fiscal year. And that completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council at this point? All right, then I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if we have any speakers.
We have one speaker, Ron Kirkish.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and community. I highly recommend this, hiring these Quality of Life officers. As a year or even longer ago, we had a huge problem with homeless downtown and along First Street, at Nob Hill Safeway. And it took the chief at that time and his people a lot of work to clean it up, clean it out, and to, for those businesses. I think these, these officers would do a great job in helping downtown and those businesses. You stole my thunder, Mayor, I was thinking the same thing. So I recommend very highly that we hire these guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And no others? No other comments?
No other public comment.
Okay, then closing the public hearing, and ready for a motion if there's no more discussion.
Mayor, I made, I sort of made the motion that we authorize the hiring and implementation of the Quality of Life Officers Pilot Program, and also adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 adopted budget by 445,400 for each fiscal year.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay, so that motion was made by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Marks. Do you need a rereading of that, Leanne, or is that all you need?
That's all we need.
Then roll call.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
Mayor Blankley.
Yes, so that's also unanimous with the five, to zero. Okay, next item is item D, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Plan Consortium Agreement with the County of Santa Clara, with the County of Santa Clara County, with the County of Santa Clara. All right, Jimmy, are you giving the staff report, or is Bryce? Okay, Bryce.
Look at Mayor and Council. So a little bit of background to this item. SB 2 was adopted in 2017, which was a series of legislation that was aimed at helping, trying to deal with the housing issue in the state. Part of that is funding for housing revenues that are collected for the intention to increase a stock of affordable housing in the state. A portion of the funds are channeled through what's called the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program. This is managed by the HCD, State of California. It's an allocation to local governments through formulas to aid projects and programs for addressing unmet housing needs. The revenue amounts typically change each year, it depends on real estate transactions that happen, and the formulas are loosely based on the CDPG formulas for communities in federal fiscal year '17. At this time, the city is, has eligible for 623,900. This is two years of allocation fiscal year '19 and '20. Santa Clara County is proposing a non-competitive application to access those funds as part of a consortium of different cities. Through this program, participating cities then, and the county consortium have access, but the, the funds and the reporting would be administered by the county. Some of these eligible activities include the development, acquisition, rehabilitation of both rental housing, as it were, affordable to extremely low, very low, low and moderate income households, as well as affordable rental and ownership units, including accessory dwelling units, to meet growing workforce needs, up to 120% of the annual median income. This also can be used for assisting persons experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness, and also homeownership opportunities, including down payment assistance programs. The county has sent us a sample agreement from another jurisdiction of a consortium agreement that was attached to staff report. The final county agreement is not yet ready for review, but they are proposing similar annual reports to be provided by the county to HCD on behalf of the partnership cities. The city will have a review period as far as their performance measures and reports, and then written acceptance of those reports as well. The agreement currently is proposed for a five-year term, which is, begins with federal fiscal year '19, goes through federal fiscal year '20, '23. At that point, the proposal is that the contract would be renewed each year unless the city chooses to withdraw. We can only withdraw within a certain period as long as, at the completion of one year. Again, the funding, 624,000 allocated across from two years of allocation. A portion would be retained by the county for administration costs, but that amount is to be determined in the final consortium agreement. Future annual amounts that we receive from this funding would vary. This is additional revenue and is not adopted in the, in the current budget. So recommendation for council tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the City of Gilroy's participation in the county consortium, and then authorizing city administrator to execute the final consortium agreement, depending on an approved as to form and content from the city attorney's office. With that, that completes the presentation.
Thank you, Bryce. Jimmy?
Thank you, Bryce. I think it would be remiss to, to not acknowledge that sometimes the fruits of our labor come much, much later after the labor itself. This is an exact byproduct of all the meetings that the ad hoc committee and city staff had with the Office of Supportive Housing. On a phone call with the Office of Supportive Housing, I was asked, is Gilroy going to claim their PLHA money? And unfortunately, the best answer I had was, what is PLHA money? And this is what this report is about tonight. Had we not claimed this, this money would have gone back to the state, and it would have been put to those programs, but as council has stated many times, we need funds to be able to address these issues at the local level, and this is a benefit of Gilroy being at the table with these partners, and as I like to call them, friends. So we got a little lucky on this one, that somebody was looking out for us, and that is a pure benefit of being at the table for these discussions. So I do want to give some appreciation to the Office of Supportive Housing, and also to the ad hoc committee that made that connection probably about a year ago when we first talked to them. So I certainly hope you'll support this, this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, I've got some comments, if no one else on the council does too. This should be something that we're all really excited about. Bryce, you sound like mean. It's hard to sound excited when you're just a matter-of-fact over. But this is 600,000, and what I'd like to ask or confirm is that, you know, we have, we have a problem in Gilroy because we are Gilroy, and because the percentages of area median income are so high, and Gilroy has a hard time meeting those percentages as compared to people who live north of us. It's always a struggle, as we've had in prior council meetings, to make sure that anything we do that's for the benefit of the lower percentages of AMI go to people who are already in Gilroy, and not to those that are outside of Gilroy. So one of the things that this can do, correct, that we can use this money for, is to better assist those who are in a home to stay in a home, right? With rent, utilities, whatever else, so that that's one big plus that this money can go for. Not that it can't go for all the other things too, it's just that it's hard, it seems to be difficult when there's nobody in Gilroy that can meet the 30% AMI or whatever, 50% AMI, and we have to go out. Again, just looking for ways that we use money better for our own residents first. And that, that's a true statement, right? I'm asking to make sure that that is what this money can go for, correct?
Correct. It's one of the four different categories, but yes, it's anything that helps keep people in their homes and essentially act as that preventative, homeless preventative measure.
Right, okay. That's what makes me pretty happy to see that. Okay, anybody else have any comments? No? Okay, then with this item, we need, wait, public comment, I got to go to public comment. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay, no speaker, so closing public comment, and the, the motion needs to be for two things, to adopt the resolution and to authorize the city administrator to execute it, so.
May I suggest we make these two separate motions?
Very good. Okay, so two separate motions, so do I have a motion and a second? Okay, so it looks like Councilmember Leroy Munoz, seconded by Councilmember Marks, to adopt a resolution approving the City of Gilroy's five-year participation in a county consortium to receive and allocate funds totaling 623,913 by the State of California from the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program.
That is correct.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
Mayor Blankley.
Yes, that passes unanimously, five. All right, the next one? Is that also Councilmember Leroy Munoz, and seconded by Councilmember Marks?
It could be. I'm fine with that. The screen never changed.
Oh, oh, maybe because it was waiting on me. Do you need to go through the screen, Leanne? Why don't you, whoever moved and seconded-
I will redo my, my motion.
And I will-
Okay, so then we have a, a motion by Councilmember Leroy Munoz, seconded by Councilmember Marks, to authorize the city administrator to execute the final Santa Clara County Consortium Agreement following an approval as to form and content determination by the city attorney.
May I, as, since I'm addressed in the motion, I ask to be clarified, it should be approved as to form only, that's what the agreement actually shows, and that's what we normally do.
Okay, so approved as to form, not, not as-
The content is up to you, and form is what we take care of.
Okay, so deleting and content. All right, and that would be roll call then? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, also passes by five. Okay, next item, item E, Gourmet Alley Ad Hoc Committee Formation. And Corinne is going to give the staff report. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. This evening, I bring before council a request for the formation of an ad hoc committee for Gourmet Alley. In September of 2020, the city council adopted a resolution to support Gilroy's vision of becoming a recreation destination. The vision included the development of three key initiatives, one of which was Gourmet Alley. Then in January of this year, the city council held a special meeting and received a presentation from the Gilroy Downtown Business Association concerning the Gourmet Alley project. In pursuit of this project, an ad hoc committee is recommended in order to provide extra focus on the planning efforts needed for the development of Gourmet, of the Gourmet Alley project, resulting in its successful implementation. An ad hoc committee is designed to be temporary and formed to address specific tasks and objectives. By the nature of ad hoc committees in the State of California, the committee would have up to 12 months to complete its objectives, upon the completion of which it would be dissolved. Specifically, the purpose of this committee would be to assist with the strategic planning and implementation efforts- Specifically, the purpose of this committee would be to assist with the strategic planning and implementation efforts of the Gourmet Alley project. Committee members would clearly identify and prioritize items that could be implemented in a reasonable defined timeline that would be included, including but not limited to identifying project challenges and objectives, developing an initial as well as a sustainable financial plan, and obtaining stakeholder and community input. The committee is proposed to be comprised of up to three council members, joined by city staff, and then the committee would engage local stakeholders, such as the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Business Association, Visit Gilroy, and others that may also be asked to join the committee. And with this, I conclude my report and entertain any questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Corinne. All right, council, any questions of Corinne? Councilmember Bracco.
Is this going to be a subcommittee like we had for the homeless? Where it's the city staff and the council members? And we invite someone in to talk to us if we want to hear from them?
Mr. Bracco, I think this will be a little different in the fact that we have the majority of our partners identified. So I believe that they would be at the table the entire time, but then you could invite other folks as you need or see fit.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. Councilmember Marks?
I'm just wondering, it's up to the council, but I think we should just not have it Gourmet Alley, but include all of downtown because the businesses in downtown will rely heavily on Gourmet Alley and vice versa. They all work together. And right now, we do have some, you know, issues with downtown businesses. And maybe this is a way we can kind of break a stranglehold and actually work on everything together because it goes hand in hand.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. Councilmember Tovar, let's get through all the council members.
Well, and again, I think Councilmember Marks brings up a really good point because, you know, I know this is focusing on Gourmet Alley, but a lot of what, at least I'm hearing is, and I mean, you had a speaker here thinking that there hasn't been much change, and you're having business owners saying, why are we fixing the backside when we should be fixing the front side? And that's very concerning to me. Where again, I don't think, maybe, you know, again, you read the name Gourmet Alley, and that's perception is that's all the discussion is going to happen. And I think we need to be smart about this and say, it should be all of downtown. Because again, I hear it over and over and over, why are we fixing the backside when we should be fixing the front side? So again, I think my colleague brings up a really good point that, you know, it should be a broader discussion.
And maybe, oh, I'm sorry. Peter, did you want, I thought maybe Peter was going to jump in.
No.
Okay, no? Oh, all right. And also, now I lost my train of thought. I agree with Councilmember Tovar on that because, I'm sorry, I just totally lost my train of thought. When I did that, go ahead. I'll go and see if you remember. Who initiated this request? Who is the initiator of this ad hoc committee, whatever you call it?
The city council did as part of its fiscal year 22, '23 strategic plan.
And we specifically called it Gourmet Alley?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where it came from, council. I'm just pointing out.
No, right, right.
Yeah, that, okay.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just jump in on that point, yeah. The discussion that was had was specifically around Gourmet Alley. And look, I can appreciate the fact that it's part of a larger kind of context there, but I think the idea was we were specifically looking at improvements to the alley itself. And if we're trying to put some contours around that are workable, because if we expand it out to just the downtown, now it's everything under the sun, and I don't know how successful that's going to be if we allow that kind of mission creep. I'm not suggesting that we don't have a lot to improve downtown, but I think just for this specific program, we should probably be pretty targeted.
Yeah, understood. I tend to agree, even though I understand what you guys, what the rest is saying. I just know that the way this came about was as part of our attempts to address the three recreation and tourism initiatives. And one of those initiatives was Gourmet Alley. So whether or not this pans out to be something that is just Gourmet Alley or other things evolve and are discovered, but it seems to me it should retain its title because that's what its intended purpose was, unless its intended purpose is different.
I'm okay with that as long as we address other issues with downtown. Because in my mind, if we can't attract businesses to Gourmet Alley because of, you know, what other areas of downtown looks like, that kind of defeats the purpose. I'm okay with keeping the title as long as it doesn't limit us because I think the ad hoc committee would have very short conversations when they met if it's just strictly Gourmet Alley, so.
It will be for the ad hoc committee to determine the best use of time for that committee. Councilmember Tovar?
Mayor, and again, I sort of, yes, I know that we had this discussion way back when creating this subcommittee or ad hoc committee, but I guess a question for the city administrator where this is different than any other ad hoc committee that we've had, where he's said we've identified who are partners in. My bigger concern is that it's well represented. It's not a few voices. It's the entire business community that we get them out there and we get them involved in this because, you know, I understand it's for the betterment of our downtown and our businesses, but you have business owners saying, we don't need that right now. And I want all those voices to come together and not just a few voices. So when we say we've identified those partners, I want to make sure that all our business owners are involved in this discussion because I think it brings up the broader discussion of, yes, let's improve this, but we also have to do this and that. So I just want to make sure that that does occur. We do talk about getting the entire community involved, but I think it's important that we get the business community involved as well. Thank you.
Do you want to, yeah, my response, you can respond to, my response is that this is primarily for those who are on the alley, is it not? Those businesses that are on the alley, that, well, I mean, that's what my understanding of the initial purpose of this was for. If this is including businesses that are nowhere near the alley, just downtown, not the alley between 4th and 7th like we've been talking about, it's a different thing, and the more, the more broad you make it, the less likely you're going to attack. I'm going to let Jimmy speak right now, and then we'll go, maybe, if you need to contradict me, contradict me. I just want this to be clear.
No, and I think it's important to point out that this was directed by council, and council can always change direction. But really, the development of what occurs in that committee comes from the members of the ad hoc committee, and that's up to the three council members. As staff, we implement the policy, but we won't, we don't dictate who participates or who doesn't. So I would just let you know that we wouldn't be in the way of any of those kinds of things.
Okay, so is that enough said then to go about forming the committee after public comment? Does anyone else have anything else they need to say? Okay, then let's go to public comment. Let me open that.
Our first speaker is Gary Walton.
Okay, and then we have a second speaker?
Our second speaker is Ron Kirkish.
Okay, and is that it? The two?
Yes, just the two.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Gary Walton. I'm the president of the Gilroy Downtown Business Association, and I'm really happy that this got to the council today. We had come before the council before, I think in April, asking for the ad hoc committee because we feel that the city and the staff need to be part of this. This is not a solo sport. This is a team sport when you're trying to redevelop your downtown and bring back the heart of your community. And, you know, we have done two events specifically on the alley for the community to show them the vision that we have, you know, for that, and have received great responses to it. This last Sunday, we did the Dia de los Muertos on the alley, again, activating that alley. We have spent our own funds to decorate the alley, add lighting. And it's really important, like I said, this is a team sport. We can't do this in a silo. We need all the partners. We need the chamber. We need the tourism board. We need the city. That's how we're going to get this done. It has to be all of us. And so, you know, I'm anxious to work with the city. We, I was the chair of the task force, the downtown plan, specific plan. In 2002, we adopted it in 2005, and it's really time to update that study. And it's my understanding that there was a grant that was requested. We didn't get it, so we have to do this ourselves. Nobody's going to come and save us, and nobody's going to go fund this, but we can do this ourselves. There's a lot of small communities that do this on their own, and we can do this. We have qualified staff. We have people on the downtown association that have been working on this for a long time, that are knowledgeable about it. And we have other people in the community like Jane Howard on tourism, the Chamber of Commerce. We have what we need to do this. We just need to do it. So I'm anxious to get this going. I want to have this discussion. And it's not just Gourmet Alley. I think this is something that we've been working on. We have generated some excitement about it. We ultimately need an overall plan for downtown. We need a new specific plan with objectives, funding to get stuff done, you know, because last time there was no funding to do it. And what happened? It sat on a shelf. So we need to look at this a little bit different. But I'm glad this came up before the city council tonight. I'm hoping that this gets approved, and I'm hoping that we can start this soon. Because, you know, this is something that we've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort. And again, this is a team sport. We need you to make this happen, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Hello again, council mayor. Last week, my wife and I got the chance to eat at Tempo, the new restaurant, and it was wonderful. I had the prime rib, and it was very, very good. While we were there, I met with, I ran into Jose Montez. Jose's a wonderful man, as are all of our downtown developers and business owners. Jose, I asked how his project was going because I've heard that there's been a delay, and it's a frustrating delay for Jose. I think most of you know what the frustration is. It's PG&E. He needs help from our council, from our city, to work with PG&E. I understand that PG&E, we have a franchise with PG&E. PG&E is not helping them. They're delaying him, delaying him, delaying him. I would hope that, I'm speaking for Jose. He doesn't even know I'm doing this. But I would hope that our city council, our administrator, would work with Jose, find out what he needs, and get on PG&E's rear end and tell him to get on it. Because as long as he's delayed, so is downtown and so is Gourmet Alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. All right, so that closes public comment. So now we need to discuss, it doesn't have to be three. It can be one, it can be two. But who of the council would be on this? And please keep in mind that these kinds of meetings happen during business hours, especially when you have lots of other partners. You have to have a flexible enough schedule to be able to be effective on these ad hoc committees. And I am asking, I guess, to start with who has a specific desire to be on it and the time to do it.
I would love to be on it.
Okay, so Councilmember Marks, who is our downtown representative, is one request. Who else is requesting?
Well, we're missing, we're missing two other council members. I mean, you sort of put, you sort of put some restrictions on, or basically laid it out. I mean, yeah, I don't have a flexible schedule. I have a lot of input, a lot of say in this because I have a bigger concern. But obviously, I mean, you know, it's to the beneficial, benefit of the committee. You know, I can't be there because, you know, I work, obviously. I can't be there at 11 o'clock Monday or Thursdays or whatever. But I think, again, we need, and I have all the confidence in Councilmember Marks, but I think we need more representation because we need more voices, you know. And so I'm a little concerned if Councilmember Marks is the only one because I think we need to have more voices on here.
We can always adjust the schedule around you like we did before.
I mean, again, I mean, yes, you know, because I think, and I don't want to be the person who holds this up because it's important, but I think we need more voices.
Well, then, since neither Councilmember Bracco nor I nor Councilmember Leroy Munoz can fit this in, then would you, if you don't mind, we'll put you on. We'll see how it goes. That still leaves room for one more if there's one of the absent council members. Jimmy, do you have any comments on this or how I'm doing this? Okay, no? I can't tell behind masks. We can just throw them on?
No, no, I want someone who wants to be there.
But I mean, no, if the ad hoc committee is willing to, you know, as we've done before, you know, sort of, we can work the schedule.
Because they can try, Fred. And I'm just trying, but if it turns out that you're missing, you know, everyone, then they can take it from there. But at least we can get it formed, right, to get this moving, and we will start it with Councilmembers Marks and Councilmember Tovar. Okay? I mean, we have to vote on that, but I'm saying that's where we're starting. Andy, are you trying to say something?
Actually, I have a question. No, I'm okay with it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. No, I have a quick question. I believe in the staff report, Corinne Decker mentioned that it would be for a period of a year. I think we ought to, an ad hoc committee, it simply has to be ad hoc. It doesn't have to be a finite term, but if the council wishes to make it a year, we ought to make that part of the motion. That can always be renewed, of course. The important point is that it can't be a permanent standing.
Okay, so do we want to set an expiration on it of November 30th, 2022? October 31st? Aren't you? I don't know.
I don't know. I'm just one of many.
Councilmember Bracco?
I would say later because like with our last ad hoc committee, you know, if you go out a year, well, it took us three or four months just to get it going.
I'd say after, in January, we would start. Is that a, what do you think?
Or not put a date?
Yeah.
Yes, not put a date. I don't.
All right, let's not put a date. Let's just know it has to be temporary.
Just needs to be clear that it's not a permanent committee. It does not have to have a date. I just wanted to make sure we understand it.
Okay, so what do we need to do? A thumbs up for Councilmembers Tovar and Councilmember Marks? Okay, there's your, there's your ad hoc committee.
Now, I suggest we take an actual vote to appoint the committee, to establish the committee and appoint Councilmembers Marks and Tovar as members.
Okay.
Leaving open the possibility of additional members.
Okay, then that is made, that motion is made by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Leroy Munoz. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, that brings us to city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before Fire Chief Wyatt gives an update on the wildfire, the wildland fire year, I wanted to let council know of something that occurred today that maybe hasn't been on your radar in quite some time. After many delays and many pandemic-related issues, the city's new financial system went online today. Maybe not the most exciting news to the public, but for us, it's the first step in becoming part of that technology partner that we said we wanted to be with our partners and businesses and vendors. So much of the processes that were done via paper and, I don't know how else we did it sometimes, are now electronic. And I really want to thank just a few people real quick. I want to thank our finance director, Harjo, and then Cindy Murphy, Rosemary Guerrero, Erica Pacheco, Erica Hernandez, Algorita Carzano, and Karina Baxter, who were the module leads. So each section has a module, like accounts payable and such. And those folks really, throughout the pandemic and throughout all the challenges that we've had in the last couple of years, have seen us to the finish line, so I'm really proud of them and I'm really proud of our city for somehow finding a way to get this done when a lot of cities had just shut it down because of the pandemic. So a little victory every once in a while is good for us. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Wyatt, who will give you the wildland fire support update.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. I'd wanted to take a few minutes and go over what we've experienced this year with our massive wildfires and in particular what Gilroy, as a city and as a fire department, has done to contribute to the other communities that have been suffering. Earlier this year, we joined the Cal OES statewide mutual aid program. And in this agreement that we signed back in April of 2021, the state provided us a Type 6 wildland engine. This is the picture of it right there. The state also agreed to maintain all costs of the engine, less $100. And then also, the city agreed to provide staffing of three wildland-trained firefighters. And so we've met our agreement and then some. Let me go through what this year is. Let me go through what this year has been like. Also, the state also reimburses all our overtime costs as well as the deployment costs, administrative fees. So the program advantages to the city gives back to other communities in their time of need. It's not as if Gilroy hasn't had their own times, but we utilize mutual aid every single day. So our neighbors just to the north of us have graciously come into our city when we needed them and vice versa. But this is also an opportunity for us to go and extend ourselves into the other communities. Also, it provides an excellent training and experience for our young Gilroy Fire Department. I've stated this before, but I'm going to state it again. Literally one-third of the department has less than three years on and another third of it has less than three years on as supervisors. So we have an extraordinarily young department and I will say somewhat inexperienced. But this also provides an opportunity for us to use the OES wildland engine for city use when it's not being deployed elsewhere. Our aging fleet, we are replacing our engines, but it's not fast enough. So having an OES engine there in our backyard for our use is extremely helpful. Also, it taps into statewide funds, or I should say state funds from OES for purchasing our own wildland engine for the city. And it's also an incentive to attract new firefighters to our city. So let's talk about what we've done. Starting on June 30th of this year, we were actually dispatched to the lava fire. But in the process of almost getting to the salt, the lava fire, we were reds dispatched to the sulfire. It had grown exponentially in a very short amount of time and threatened to cut off I-5 near Shasta County. So we were deployed with a five-engine strike team from Region 2, which we're a part of. It included a battalion chief as the strike team leader from San Francisco and included one Gilroy engine, the Type 6 that I just showed you a couple of slides ago, three engines from San Francisco and also one engine from Nevada City. In the process, they, they were able to fight successfully against 12,600 acres of vegetation and over 1,200 firefighters were deployed to it. As I said, we were one of the first ones to arrive and keep I-5 open. In fact, you see two of our firefighters there maintaining a hose line and trying to keep the the embers and the flames back so it doesn't jump the freeway and make matters much worse. Not too long after that, July 10th, we were redeployed to the Bexworth Fire. That was in Plumas and Lassen Counties. As far as the stats, over 105,000 acres were devoured. 148 structures were destroyed. 46 structures were damaged. And 2,745 firefighters were deployed. And here you see a picture of two scenes of our firefighters fighting, again, along a road that was needed to keep open and keeping the fires, keeping the fire from jumping the road and causing new fires. Then on July 19th, we were reds dispatched again to the Dixie Fire. It included Butte, Plumas, Lassen, Shasta and Tohoma Counties. This fire shows just how bad things were getting. That's our Type 6 engine and again, they were keeping the fire from jumping the road, keeping access open so we could defend the structures that were behind it. The stats on that, 963,000 acres were burned. One of the largest, second-largest fire in state history. 1,329 structures were destroyed or damaged. And here you see the, one of the towns completely decimated, just demonstrating the destructive power. And even though we had been there in that town just 12 hours before, the sudden shift of the winds and the sudden intensity of the fire just took away the town. This is the town of Greenville, by the way. 6,200 firefighters were deployed. And it took all the way to October 25th before the fire was contained. This is a shot of one of our firefighters who was resting and it kind of gives you an idea of the conditions. Not many, many places for us to rest when we're, when we're told to take a break. We have to still be on alert for the fire actually getting worse at nighttime. And this firefighter found whatever resource he could find to, to rest and sleep for a few hours anyway. We were then dispatched to the September 15th fire called the River Complex Fire. This was in Klamath National Forest. The stats on this fire, 199,000 acres were burned. 122 structures were destroyed or damaged. And 330 fire, 330 firefighters were deployed. Gilroy Fire Department finally was de-mobbed on September 19th and that was a total of 81 days of continuous deployment. We traded out five crews during that time period. So they didn't all work 81 days, but every two weeks, we would send in a fresh crew of three to take over from the previous ones. I will say that the strike team leaders that we worked with were impressed by Gilroy. I said that our firefighters are fairly young, but we had experienced captains who kept our crew safe. And the San Francisco crews, they, they aren't used to fighting the type of fires that we are. And so they, they would pattern their actions after ours. And so the strike team leaders from, from San Francisco may mention that not only this, the remainder of this year, but they'd like to see us as a part of their team next year, to be included. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
All right, council, any questions? Councilmember Bracco?
Chief, when you go through all those fires, was it the same team through all those fires? You were with the San Francisco and Nevada City?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And to that, to, just to add to that, that this year, as bad as it seems, was not the worst year. The worst year was last year. And we did participate a little bit on, on that. But this, this opportunity gave us a chance to be a part of almost two and a half million acres of burning, burning forest and communities that, we couldn't save them all, but we, we did save dozens and dozens of homes during that time period. And I will say that looking ahead to next year, we're, we're looking at with the full staffing, and again, I'm going to go back and thank council again. None of this would have been possible if you hadn't had the faith and trust to give us the staffing for the Santa Teresa Station. And we've been working steadily trying to build up our workforce since then. We're shy of only three firefighters now, but we feel pretty confident that with next year, we can actually contribute even more to helping out the state. And again, we get back funding that will help us to rebuild our own apparatus for the protection of the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I thank you very much for that report. Very much appreciated. I'm glad our firefighters all returned home safely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. City attorneys' report?
No report.
Okay, then that brings us into all the closed session wording.
All right, here we go. Closed session will be a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A8A2. The property is the Gilroy Gardens Hillside property, approximately 342 acres. Assessor parcels is given on the agenda. Negotiator is Jimmy Forbes, city administrator, other parties to negotiations, Santa Clara County Parks and Recreation Department. Under negotiations price and terms of payment. So the first thing to do is to take public comment, if there is any.
We have one public comment speaker, Mr. Brian Henske.
All right, I'm mayor of the city councils. I know I'm just new and just, you know, new to this. And I have a speech of language disability, just understanding this, how the city of Gilroy is doing. And I know I'd like to be a part of it and I'd like to thank Carol for letting me play some tennis. But with this tennis thing, you know, I worked out every morning at the, at Los Angeles Park. And I understand how courts are to get a good place, so. I just think, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I just think it's best that you guys are doing the best you can with the, doing all the stuff you guys are doing with the park at the Los Angeles Park and just hopefully we get it back up and running with all six courts. So, you know, for tournaments, matches or to practice with. So I truly respect that, Carol. I thank you for letting me come and listen to you guys speak and hopefully this will keep going.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on closed session?
No, we don't have any public comment on closed session and I will record Mr. Henske's public comment as part of general public comment because that's where it belongs.
Yes, that's where it belongs. Thank you.
All right, so we don't need any city attorney advice. What we need to do is clear the room and then when we get into closed session, vote to remain in closed session and that is a reportable action.
All right. Okay, so let's, let's adjourn for about five minutes, council. Okay, we'll come right back.